If there was PowerPoint, but there are handouts. There are not quite enough handouts.
We can share.
So, yeah. Share around.
The violence of PowerPoint was simply because too many people spend far too much time making pretty PowerPoints. And I didn't want things to be a time sink.
You didn't need to worry about that with us.
I suspected that was gonna be the case.
This is my standard way of putting together.
Well, no, we share it all together and everything.
We can share anything.
Who's their reviewers? Make sure you're reviewers.
Well, we have this one for this table here. Yeah, well, I'll show this one.
Wow, you're so legit, look at this!
Yes, look at that.
So, I've handed out my...
Where it at?
Okay. So, I've talked about the experiment before and I probably made it sound really, really complicated and in fact, it's not. It's a very, very simple idea. So, I've tried to lay it out here so that it is, so that how simple it is is really clear. But before I get into describing the experiment, I want to start by talking a little bit about the background and why I might be interested in what I'm trying to find out here, just so that that will help you guys frame questions to see if I'm really getting at what I'm trying to get at with the experiment. So, in a lot of conventional economic models, the decision makers are assumed to know some probability distribution. Either beforehand, they just know it by magic, or they're expected to arrive at a correct estimate of the probability distribution by applying Bayes' rule to their experience, which converge fairly quickly to a correct estimate of the probability. For example, an example that comes up a lot given the area that I'm interested in is search-based models of unemployment. And if you do a search-based model of unemployment, what you start with is this elaborate dynamic optimization problem where in every period, a job searcher has to decide, okay, if I accept, should I accept the job offer in front of me, or should I continue to look for a job? And which of those decisions optimizes my lifetime earnings? So, it's an infinite, basically an infinite-period dynamic optimization problem. But if you assume that the individual knows what the probability distribution is of job offers, that you can collapse that problem to a very simple static rule, which turns out to be establish a reservation wage and take the first job that comes along that offers you more than that. So, it takes a big, complicated dynamic optimization problem and turns it into a very simple rule. But that depends on people making accurate Bayesian judgments about probabilities. So, it actually matters whether they do or not. What I'm getting at in this experiment is that our usual reasoning about how people reason about probabilities, the traditional reasoning, is that it's a context-free process. In other words, if I am asking you about the probability of winning the lottery, or if I am asking you about the probability of being hit by an asteroid, or if I am asking you about the probability of a coin coming up heads, those are all fundamentally the same question, that you don't think about probabilities differently depending on what I'm asking you the probability of. Now, I'm skeptical of that view. And I think that that is inconsistent with how we think the brain works. We think, you know, it has been a very long time since anyone took very seriously the general, the generic meatloaf of smartness theory of the brain. Brains are built out of bits. The bits have different functions and different bits are engaged by different problems. So, what I'm interested in is are there different probability estimation heuristics that we can engage by framing the problem, by framing identical statistical problems in different problem domains? For example, and by what I mean by different problem domains, for instance, job search, searching for a date, trying to catch a fish. Those are in fact the three problem domains I want to talk about. And sort of for generic statistical purposes, my maintained hypothesis is that given different framing vignettes, people will form statistically significantly different probability estimates about the situation. And the obvious null hypothesis is regardless of the framing vignettes, people will form the same kinds of subjective estimates of probability. Yep?
When you say that people will like form the same idea about this probability, do you mean their conception of one in four, because each, like these examples that you have are all...
When we get into the questions, it'll be clearer exactly what I mean, I think? Because I've got specific questions here.
Yeah.
Will give examples of what kinds of probability estimations I'm talking about. So, just before we get into the questions, I want to describe the three framing vignettes and I'll just read these off. They're in front of you as well. And I'm, the reason for doing this is I want to get exact words in front of you so that you could, if there's something particularly egregious about the wording, you can catch it now. What I have in mind is three treatments, so three framing vignettes. And each individual participant will be exposed to only one of these to avoid cross-contamination. I want to activate one particular set of heuristics and only that one. So, that's why I don't want, I don't want people having, considering multiple framing vignettes. Vignette number one is the job search treatment, which goes like this. Individual J is actively searching for a new job. Reliable statistics suggest that on average, and under current economic conditions, individuals similar to J have a one in four chance of finding a job each week they search. In the following questions, you will be given additional information about J's job search experience. In each case, you will be asked to give your best guess about the likelihood of J finding a job, assuming that you know nothing more than the information provided. The second treatment, second framing vignette, is about dating. And here we say, individual J is actively searching for a date. Reliable statistics suggest that on average, individuals similar to J have a one in four chance of finding a date each week, each week they search. In the following questions, you will be given an addition, you will be given additional information about J's date search experience. In each case, you will be asked to give your best guess about the likelihood of J finding a date, assuming that you know nothing more than the information provided. And our third treatment is all about fishing. The fishing treatment goes like this. Individual J goes fishing in a particular spot each week. Reliable statistics suggest that on average, at this spot, individuals using the equipment and techniques similar to J's have a one in four chance of catching a fish each week. In the following questions, you'll be given additional information about J's fishing experience. In each case, you will be asked to give your best guess about the likelihood of J catching a fish, assuming that you know nothing more than the information provided. Now, one of the things I say fully off is that I don't have any particular theory about how these different framing vignettes will affect the probability formation process other than they will be different. And I should say that's not entirely true. There is a, there is an important difference between the fishing treatment and the other two. And that is that the job search treatment or date search treatment, both of those are situations in which someone is sort of making a global judgment about your worthiness. Are you good enough to hire? Are you good enough to date? The fishing treatment is different. The fish doesn't bite your lure because you're a good person. The fish bites your lure because it's shiny. So, there isn't the same kind of sense that someone is making a global judgment about the worthiness of the fisher.
I believe Jessica had something to say and I'm dying to hear it right now.
Like the words in this, the job search, the dating, and the fishing. Like, I think that your interaction in each one of those things, if you go on a job interview, if you're a total jerk, or if you have bad social cues or don't pick up social cues, it's gonna change your probability of getting a job regardless of your qualifications. Same thing with the dating, I gotta say. And then with the fishing, you can have the same lure and you could be fishing in the same spot and still not have a skill level that someone else has. I don't, I guess I don't understand how it's different from the other two.
We'll catch you a little bit later.
Because the skill set is, in the first two treatments, the skill set is very similar. It's about interpersonal interaction. And the, in the third case, the skill set is quite different. So, and, you know, I am not wedded to the hypothesis that the first two are alike and the third is different. That's just something I, what I expect to see is more similarity in results to the first two than in the third.
Okay, we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I would expect to see is like, you sort of give them a base rate of one in four chance, and then I would expect that their quasi-Bayesian updating would be influenced by their personal experience with whichever situation.
Yep, that's very possible.
And then we're there, and then we're there.
I was gonna point out that another difference between the job search and the dates is that a person has a minimum sort of job that they'll accept and quality of date that they will accept. That isn't necessarily true with fishing. But, I mean, and just as far as believability, you might want to put something about that in the fishing question, such as like, you know, a fish that is, you know, large enough to keep or something, you know, like, because it just seems weird that it would take somebody a week...
Gotcha.
And only have 25% chance of catching a fish there. That's not a normal probability of fish catching.
What is a normal probability of fish catching?
That's a word for fishing.
Fishing.
Yes.
You could just say over the limit, fish. So, you want to...
Or catching a particular kind of fish that is rare or something.
Okay, so we're back over there and then we're over here.
Well, I'm imagining you use the torque on this also to jump me down and help people answer their questions. I think you, well, beans is there, I think most people are probably gonna be honest there, so you might, but what I'm worried about is that 25%. Like, solid facts like that tend to rope people into a whole state, like when, because I read there first and my initial, and then I read through the questions and I just went one quarter, one quarter, one quarter without thinking about it. So, I just kinda, you know, did the math real quick. It's a simple math, okay? It's like, oh, well, I mean, you know, 25%, probability doesn't change, basically, we can just kinda take it out. So, like, and it's, I don't know, maybe like, it's the, like, what do you, like, find another way to, like, rephrase it where it doesn't just sit there and such an impact with that, like, hard stats. It's just kinda like, yeah.
Got there, there, and then there.
Sir?
I actually disagree. Like, I read these three things, I liked the experiment, and then when I got to question three, like, he'd searched for a job for four weeks, what do you think, does this change your guess about J's probability? And I know that it shouldn't, but it does change my guess because I think that must be a jerk. Because he has, you know, Clay...
Okay, that's right. And now I'm going there and then there again.
Because we talked about this before and I was interested in some of the other things you were using as examples. And one was, and you spoke about it in class also, about picking, you know, colored balls out of a jar.
Yeah.
And so, when I'm looking at this, I mean, you were saying reliable statistics and this is individuals similar to J. So, I'm interested in whether the people who are taking your experiment are going to be making statistical mistakes, or whether this is going to be based on information, like whether they think that the statistic is wrong, or that the statistics aren't reliable, or that the subject is an outlier. And so, in this situation, if you added in something that, which was the random thing and then added those questions, you could maybe look at whether your, your subjects in your experiment were just completely off in their view of statistics in general. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because I'm, because you said this is balls out of a bowl with a blindfold and they went through this question. I'm curious about, I mean, for us, this is not very difficult, you know, as economists, but for most people, you know, when you say, okay, if you flipped a coin, you know, and it came up heads, which was, I mean, you won, what were the odds it came up? And they're like, well, obviously, 100%, because it came, I mean, you could have all sorts of weird things that are happening.
Yes.
Wouldn't question one take care of that?
And that is more or less what I'm looking for, actually.
This is what you're, this is what you're testing for.
What I am looking for is not so much whether people are right, because there's a considerable body of research that shows that people do Bayesian probability updating wrong in all kinds of situations. My question is whether they are wrong differently depending on the context.
Okay, so, I gotta get my order back in here. So, it was boom, boom, boom.
So, if I'm, if I'm correct, if you're studying this study, you're only exposed to one of these.
Correct, that's right.
Yeah, so they should be randomly distributed that people would order.
Right, okay. So, then you randomly, so, so basically, both these factors of how people are choosing their learning and their bad statistical analysis skills are all kind of in one, and that doesn't matter to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, I'm counting on your randomization to make the, the distribution of wrongness.
The probability distribution is even across the script.
And this is the only real independent variable are the three, are the different vignettes.
Okay, we're going to Sevi, Nola, it's 11.
Okay, just, so you're trying to give them a sense of like worthiness with the framing of the question, getting on job training.
Meter, meter.
Oh, right, right, thanks.
Not especially. That's just something that I think, if I were to look at these as someone who didn't write them, and I would say, okay, two of these things are alike in the way that the third isn't. And I just wanted to acknowledge that that's, that's possible.
It may be kind of a little like what Nola said, if I'm calling it that, is it just seems to me like I, as I browsed over these questions the first times and obviously like us in this class were more informed, but to me, it just looked more of like a statistical thing and not actually like thinking about this J as a person with an interpersonal experience. He's going and getting, or she is getting judged, you know, when they go on these dates or out to this, it didn't dawn on me, it was like, okay, one in four chance, yeah, that feels all right, like, move through and that would be...
And, and some people will have exactly that reaction. And some people will have that reaction to all three, and some people will have a different reaction to different ones, maybe. That's what I'm curious about.
You're just trying to test if they're just different.
I'm just trying to test if the, if, if one particular set of circumstances is more likely to elicit different kinds of responses.
I think Noel's point, she was here, it was more that if you were bad at the math, you would screw up all the questions. And if you were good at the math, you would get them all right. But I agree with the point of the test and what Jess was saying. If I hadn't found a job for four weeks, I would think my chances were less good, and I'm good at that. It's just that whole demoralization factor, like, god, you know, I wouldn't feel as motivated to go out to the next interview or...
Can we stop making that noise?
Yeah, but the fishing does seem completely rampant because you know it's just completely rampant.
As long as you're doing an exploratory study, is there a drawback to asking everybody in all three question groups, but just varying the order so that, that when, if necessary, you could only use the data from, you know, the first question that people are asked? But then you could sort of test to see if people sort of sense the pattern of the one-quarter pattern to see if they're being tested for the consistency of their, you know, just another thing.
Yeah, that's an, that's an interesting one. That, that would certainly be workable. I mean, I'll, I'll think about that.
It could be something along the lines of you ask all three vignettes, the first one is one quarter, the second one is one-third, the last one is one-eighth, and then your treatments are, you change the order of the vignettes, but the probabilities remain the same.
Yeah.
There's a possibility like that. It's there too. But then again, it's...
Yeah, there is something to be said for simplicity.
Yes.
Yeah, that's definitely, definitely.
Okay, we're back to...
It's so cool.
We're back to Jessica for right now.
I think that it would change the, it would change my pers, even though I don't like admitting this, it would definitely change my perspective of this individual if I found out they couldn't get a date or a job.
You can't capture the...
We would have to change, it's like, one, the first one would be J and the next one would be K and the next one would be L.
Yeah, but...
This person would be a globalist.
Because you are gonna get a global impression.
They would, yes, there is a possibility that they would be correlated.
So, let me, let me talk about the individual questions if there aren't any more questions about the basic setup. I just want to highlight what I'm, what I'm after with each one of these questions. And these are still the generic versions of the questions, they would be, when in the final survey, they will be adapted a little bit more to actually fit the frame they'll ask. But for now, this is just, just the generics. Okay, so question number one, if you knew nothing more than what was given above, what would you guess J's probability of success in one week of searching? What I'm looking for with that question is to find out whether, precisely whether the respondent has bought into the prior probability distribution that I'm trying to give them. So, if they tell me that, yes, it's between 20 and 40% because you just told me it was 25%, then I have reason to believe that they have accepted that, yes, this probability does in fact apply to J because J is kind of like this and I kind of buy the probability. Yeah?
With this question, between A and B, like, you told me it was 25%, but with B, I see between 20 and 40, and I'm like, eh, that looks a little too high, so I would be more inclined to answer A. Like, there's no answer that...
Exactly, yeah. That is, that's a good question. That's a good question. Did anyone else think that that, think that between 20 and 40 was kind of an unintuitive way of answering my 25%?
Like, 20 to 30 would make sense for me.
Okay, yeah, that's, that is something to look at. I was trying not to be too leady, but I've been trying to take too many options, but yeah, that's, that's a good point. Okay, question number two.
Now, I've got a question then.
Yeah.
Your closed responses are all gonna be probabilities 10, like 10%, 10%, 10%, 10%?
Well, I have somewhat different, they're all closed responses, but somewhat, somewhat different ways of asking the question.
Okay.
How about like, like, you have one in two, one in four, one in eight?
Yeah, that was another thing I wanted to ask, is whether it's a good idea, for instance, if I say the probability, the likelihood is one in four, should I also say that's 25% to make sure that people make that link? Or alternatively, when I, when I actually give percentages, give closed responses, is it better if I say one in four, one in three, one in two? What's the, do you think I have thoughts?
I just kinda like the percentages, just because it'll show whether or not they actually processed that information you just gave them.
And here's where I gotta go ahead and get, anyone here have a gambling background of any kind? Do you interpret things in terms of odds?
Yeah.
Bingo. Odds are, odds are a common frame, but that also is to a certain extent generational too. Older people tend to interpret probabilities in terms of odds.
I would think, I would think that, wait, it would be more accessible if you'd say one in four instead of 25% because it, it seems like you could apply that, especially to like catching fish, you have a one in four chance of catching a fish, it's the right size.
Sure.
The only thing about that is that later on in the questions, I like, I like how you have it ranged because it gives them an option of, of being able to, being able to put in bias, which if you just have, it would be weird, I think it would be weird to say between a one in four and a, a two in, you know, a two in one, two-fifths chance of, of da-da-da, or three-fifths or something like that.
You have, I notice if, if you look at your one and your two, they're both market situations where you have, you know, one group with a certain function basically, and another group with a certain function, and then they come into an intersection. And then your fishing one is, is more of a production situation where you are interacting with an environment that doesn't have any particular choice mechanism. So, is, is there another situation you could think of that would capture the reverse of that, where you are essentially picked, but you don't have any say in it?
Could do something like real estate, when you're trying to sell a house.
Well, yeah, but that's still pretty much a market situation because people might give you an offer that's too low or something like that. But say like, I don't know, the only one I can think of is like being drafted into the military or something.
That's, that's what occurred to me off the top of my head.
But it doesn't, doesn't seem like it would be very applicable anyways, just something that occurred.
Yeah. Yeah, so how, how I have the others' questions framed, the, the second question is I'm turning around the, instead of asking about the probability, I'm asking them to, in effect, turn the probability into an expected duration, which is actually a statistically slightly tricky thing to do because you have to be able to deal with the binomial distribution in your head, which almost no one can. But again, what I'm looking for is sort of people's intermission for likelihood, so... You look hurt.
Well, what if in the framing vignettes that you're there, you say that it's 25%, but in one circumstance, you say, oh, it's, it's about 25%, but it's, you know, plus or minus 7%. So, you have your uncertainty that's bound in there. In another framing vignette, it's 25%, yeah, but it's plus or minus 20%. And so, you have different certainty about those things. Add additional data, you'll end up with different posteriors out of it. And so, to a certain extent, we're not controlling the, your, your prior distribution of, of that 25%. It's just that's the mode or something along those lines.
Right, right. So, you're, you're thinking what could be happening, we could be seeing in effect where people are regarding that prior as more or less certain depending on the framing vignette?
Correct. So, the additional data that you have that did not for eight weeks, did not for eight weeks, would have a completely different posterior.
Okay, yeah.
We just did Bayesian talk, by the way, so just in case you're curious.
So, I, I would need to say something more specific than reliable statistics indicate.
Yeah, because what constitutes reliability?
Yeah.
Okay.
Although still, to some extent, the, the goal isn't to ascertain whether they're getting the right answer so much as whether they are getting different answers in different frames.
But you can't distinguish between whether you're processing it Bayesian or you have different priors. They could be actually doing a correct Bayesian processing, but they started with a different prior and that would be indistinguishable.
Right, so we need to pin down the prior more specifically.
So, just to be clear, Bayesian is like as you get more information, making a more accurate prediction.
Right.
And so, what you all are talking about is that the prior information, if that wasn't processed correctly, could then be influencing the answer as opposed to the additional information influencing the answer?
To a certain extent. What happens is that you have beliefs, and your beliefs can be very precise or they can be pretty fuzzy. And what happens is, is that if you start adding new data, which are consistent with you've seen before, your beliefs can start getting more and more and more precise. And so, the idea is, is that here it is, if you got some fuzzy beliefs and you throw in those eight extra observations, yeah, it'll become a little bit more precise, but not all that much more. But if you were already extremely precise, adding these things wouldn't hardly change it at all if they're consistent with what you're already seeing.
And if they're, and if they're different from what you've already seen, but your, your prior is, is very precise, new information is weighted less. So, if you, if your prior is...
Wouldn't it get fuzzier?
Well, if your prior is...
It's a little bit fuzzier.
His probability is somewhere between 10 and 30, and you get a new piece of information, you didn't get a job this week, that means more than if your prior was, if you are quite sure that he has exactly a 25% probability, and then you get another piece of information...
Here's, here's, here's the story. I regularly, almost all the time, get home before midnight. This is, this is a fact, okay? Now, you don't worry if I'm dead, you know, because I, because I always, always get home before midnight. But if you get after midnight, you just worry something bad has happened to me. If on the other hand, I was one of those people that, you know, like sometimes got home by sunrise, sometimes got home, if I wasn't home by midnight, you wouldn't worry.
Right.
And so, that's what it is, that additional piece of data didn't show up by midnight, you wouldn't be suddenly concerned I was in the hospital.
Yeah, I guess my confused look that happened was more in response to, like, when you're talking about adding the, if you're very precise in a belief and then you add more information, it only gets a little bit fuzzier, whereas if you're vague and you add information, it definitely gets more precise, leads me to believe there's a little...
Not always, it can just drive it around. It's, as long as your new information is consistent with what you're already seeing, it'll shrink it.
It's not like a status quo bias or something where you're like, kind of...
No.
...intrenched in your beliefs?
No.
Okay.
Bayes' rule is all about whether you are making correct, whether you are correctly weighting new information as it comes up.
I was wondering, as, when you're going through, cause I saw, remember that, you know, there's like an eight-week check. Are you saying that in the question that it's been an additional eight weeks or that it's eight weeks from the start?
My intent was that it's eight weeks from the start and if the language is ambiguous.
I might, that's the only thing I might say is it's an additional eight weeks. Cause kind of every time I looked at it, it just reset. You know, and again, like I've got the bias from being in here where I kind of think about it differently. But maybe just saying that it's an additional eight weeks might kind of give someone like a better framework.
Well, I was thinking not additional eight weeks. I was thinking just eight weeks.
Okay.
So is that how the question is?
From here?
Yeah.
And there was another hand that went up over here.
Oh, I reread and I don't have a question.
All right.